It just like it didn't.
I can't see that part.
Sometimes, you know, you don't have to be very far away.
It's not us. I had to take a photo. I was freezing 20 minutes ago. In the office by myself, it looked quite cold.
Excuse me, if I could have your attention? Just want to make you aware that we're turning on the camera. So it'll do voice and video, just so you're aware. It's gonna pick everything up.
Welcome, and thank you for joining us. This is what we call the Mean Order. Please join me in the present meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll go over next, uh, state meeting. Please state here. Tony?
Here.
Angela, here. Melinda?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Tiffany?
Here.
Erin?
Here.
Okay, first thing on our agenda is student achievement for the 24-25 student art exhibit sponsored by WSAB. We're here to recognize the high school art student for their first place artworks submitted to the student work exhibit at the state convention.
Yeah, so we have our art teacher, Mrs. Jill Bailey, here. And is Jules here? I see Jules. Jules Martinez is... Jules is representing Wrightstown across the state with the number-one first-place exhibit that was submitted to the WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And that's her, that's her work right there. So I'm very proud of her. Excellent. Thank you, Bailey.
I just wanted to add that the business sponsor, Performance Services, who sponsored the award, had this copy and printed it, including framed with the plaque on it, as a gift to the Kennedy School District. Jules has the original, the one that we submitted, which was a copy. And I believe Performance Services also had the copy.
I appreciate, Jill, I just want to, you know, make it known that I understand every year you have students create this work and submit it. And we had, I believe, was it five other students submitted work?
There's five in total, so four in addition.
Thank you.
First thing on the agenda is the open forum for public comments. I would like to thank all of you for attending tonight's meeting. We appreciate your engagement and participation as they are essential to ensuring the best possible educational environment for our students. At the heart of our discussions and decisions is a commitment to the well-being of our students. We value every concern brought forward and recognize that each perspective contributes to enhancing to their educational experience. While we are here to listen, responses may be provided at a later time. To ensure a productive discussion where every voice is heard, we kindly ask that all participants adhere to the public forum protocol, which allows up to five minutes of speaking time per person. This guideline ensures that everyone has equal opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns. Please make sure that you have signed in if you wish to speak. Each participant will be called to the podium in the order of the assignment sheet. Board members will not respond to questions or comments during the open forum. We also ask the public to remain respectful and to follow the Mean Order Call outlined in the agenda. So the first one that we have here is Jack Lewis.
Okay, sir. The Bowdoin years are in this period of things. And with introductions, I'm Jack Lewis. For those of you who don't know me, I was a former high school principal here until 1990, and then I went to Brilliant, a superintendent of schools, for 15 years. He served in Monomie, Stow, Keel, and Ooster for their entrance. I was also president of the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators. I'm not here to brag, I just want you to understand my credentials. And I've been a, Judy and I have been almost already former residents here. Judy more than me, she taught here for 30 years as well. But what's been going on here just disturbs us to no end. And it can't be good for the teaching staff, can't be good for the administrators, and it can't be good for the community. You see us struggling right now. This is the second time we've had a superintendent leave and we've had to pay for it to go. That's just wrong. And I offer myself, my services, to the board and to Ron. When you're starting to look, be more than happy to help. I think my credentials speak for itself. I mean, I get there very fast, but I'm looking down. So thank you for your time.
Next up we have is Sue Byers.
Sue Byers, resident village of Wrightstown. Last April, we elected two new school board members. They ran a remarkable campaign with the majority and brought us a new board president. Many of us were thrilled with the change in leadership. We truly believe, given the vote total, all board members with understanding that presidents have spoken and worked together for the benefit of the students and the community. Three months later, the wheels were coming off the bus. Investigations were being conducted into various allegations of mismanagement and illegal activity, as well as volatile abusive behavior directed at the new president as witnessed at board meetings last year. So how did Melinda, Tiffany, and Brian Green react to issues I am certain existed before the last election? They were part of a private Facebook page. You could only access it with an invitation. They were soliciting comments from a select group to build reasons to recall the president. They did not want to hear from people like me, who were very happy with the new board and the tone. And this divisive behavior carried over into meetings where they sat sullen, combative, and voted no to allow more speaking time, no to streaming meetings, no to approved meeting minutes, no to going to executive session, but yes to implementing the new Title IX. And then, they arranged for a generous donation of timber raptor saw to be installed at the Wrightstown field, which sounded really nice. But they never informed the other four board members who found out about the event after it occurred. These people keep saying our students deserve that. This behavior does not strike me as right. And Melinda is running for reelection. Next, they created a recall petition site.
I'd like to interrupt.
12 violations.
Can't interrupt, hold on. Out of order. Continue, first caller.
It's a personal attack. This is a personal attack.
Out of order. Continue.
Next thing we have to do is call petition with 12 violations of board policy. I'd like to go over a few and tell you what the actual policy states. Policy 143.6, Board Member Information Request, states the president took a picture of a sign in for a meeting, which is a violation of policy, and board member and employee names need to be redacted. False. There is nothing in this policy that references a picture or redaction. Policy 144.3, Conclusive Interest. The alleged president spoke in a political group at the Brown County Fair on behalf of the board and should have informed them. False. There is no requirement that she inform the board. She attended an event, opened up all board members to meet with community members to hear their concerns on issues. She was not paid, she did not give a speech. Policy 144.5 incorrectly referred to as general expectations of all board members, but is actually Board Member Behavior Communication and Code of Conduct, by the way. States the president missed the May 15th board meeting last year. True. This was a known absence as she is an instructor at NWTC. Her class was graduating. The entire board and district administrator were aware she would be attending the ceremony and if her key was poor. According to board meeting minutes, Melinda missed five meetings while Tiffany missed two. Another charge states communications both in person and via email should have an average response time of 24 to 48 hours. False. The policy has no required timeframe for response. Period. And it is lappable. As a community member, wait is for months for a reply to hear a question about human growth and development. When taxpayers wanted to get answers to the extra debt payments, the board stopped responding to us. You had to attend a private meeting to discuss the issue, which avoids the upper trail, by the way, and then you were told not to share your comments with others. When the recall page published these violations of policy, community members got to work and compared the charge to the actual policy. Then they pushed back on the false and inaccurate statements and demanded corrections. Now the stated reason is excessive money spent. Now the stated reason is excessive money spent on legal fees. The roll-up paper when reporting on the determination of the former board chair district administrator noted, "In a commitment to full transparency, this decision comes amidst allegations concerning superintendent contractual matters, school purchases, open meetings, law issues, legal counsel issues, board separations, and insubordination," and the quote. These are serious matters that should demand the entire board's determination to get to the truth. Instead, three of you are trying to dirty up a president in order to create a distraction. But we see you. And conclusion, I believe the president is more than qualified.
I will call time and I will hold order, please. Keep your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, the next one that I have is Penny Barta. Are we able to see the time so the speaker knows how much they have left? We're timing it up here.
One minute warning.
We'll give a one-minute warning. Okay, Penny?
Dear members of the Board of Education, my name is Penny Barta. I was born and raised in Wrightstown. I moved to Green Bay when my husband and I were first married. And we moved back to Wrightstown when our daughter started school. I work and live in Wrightstown and have raised my children in this wonderful community. I have always been so proud of our town and school district and what it represents. And I believe that we have really something special here. Sorry.
That's all right, take your time.
However, I come before you today with a growing concern. It has been evident that our Board of Education is deeply divided. And this division is hindering progress and success of our schools. I am concerned that the focus is no longer on what is best for all students in our district. Our children deserve an environment where decisions are made with their education and well-being at the forefront. Yet I worry that this is being overshadowed by personal agendas and differing viewpoints. As a community, we can and should have differing opinions. This is natural and even necessary. Though we must remember that the ultimate goal is to do what's best for our children, the future of Wrightstown. Right now, it feels as though we have lost sight of that. I fear that this lack of unity is not only affecting our students, but also our dedicated staff. We are at risk of losing really good educators who are already under immense pressure. The last thing we want to do is create an environment where those who care most about our children feel unappreciated and unsupported. I urge you to put your personal differences and work together to find common ground. The focus must be on creating an atmosphere of collaboration and respect where everyone is working toward the same goal, the success of all of the children in our district. It is critical that all of us, from the Board of Education to teachers, administrators, and parents, work as a team. When we do so, we will truly be able to create the best possible educational experience for all of the children in Wrightstown. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Renee Vandenberg?
My name is Renee Vandenberg, and I know very, very little about what's going on. My kids graduated from high school here. I pay taxes for the community and have been unable to get information. I understand this from something that happened to me a long time ago. I was the treasurer for the Brown County Forest Leaders Association. I found an embezzlement of like $13,000, brought it to the attention of the people that needed to know, and then got put under order. I wasn't allowed to talk about it. Everybody thought I stole money for a long time, until I could come out and say what I had to say. I'm just a citizen that lives here. I don't have information because it is one side against the other. One side is talking, one side can't talk. It's difficult when you can't say what's on your mind. I would just hope that people would reserve judgment a little bit more on everything that's going on until we can really hear the whole story. And that's what I would ask as a citizen and a member of the Wrightstown community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Van Netti?
Vandahe?
Vandahe, I'm sorry, I can't read your writing.
Well, I have something else to talk about, which I will talk about that in a minute, but I want to just clarify that none of these board members had anything to do with the Wrightstown baseball field. That was Mike Shawnwalter, who did all of that. He got it going, and us parents helped too. So that has nothing to do with any of these board members. And I would like to let everybody know how, even though they were being attacked, they sat and took it. They did not try to shut them down or anything. I totally respect that, and that's what it should be. What I wanted to talk about was transparency in the community. Everyone is talking about how we need to be more transparent, but yet nobody is being transparent with us. We have many questions that are not being answered. So let's dive into what is transparency in the community. It's a practice of being open and honest about community issues, values, and goals. And what, if you're honest and transparent, then people can stand behind you. Even if they don't agree with you, at least they know what you're trying to accomplish. When they don't know, it comes down to, what do I think you're trying to accomplish? What do I think the board's trying to do? Right now, I feel like the board is trying to ruin the Wrightstown School District. And it makes me sad. I have three boys in this community. I have one who's graduated, one who's a senior, and a sophomore. It saddens me to see this. Like, we need you to be transparent, all of you. Like, I would love to get an email saying, this is what we want to do in the next six months. We've got the Andy Space thing out of the way. You know, tell me what you're gonna do. What are we gonna do from here on out? What about these kids? Our football team went to state this year. And I haven't heard at every meeting that I've been to, nothing about them. We had 50 football players work their asses off to get to state when no one really thought that they could or underestimated them, and they did it. You should have been there. You should have seen the community that was there for them. It was amazing. And I had to sit there and watch my son play the last football game he will ever play on Camp Randall. And now, within six weeks, we've torn this community apart. We've divided it. That's not what this is about. We want people that want to come to Wrightstown. Right now, who wants to come here? They see all of this turmoil, they see all of it, and they're like, I don't want to go there. We were sought after. For the longest time, people wanted to come here. And now they're just like, meh. What's going on over there? They're just trying to get rid of people and stuff like that. So now I want to talk about the kids. We had five kids that were all-conference members. And that was Aiden Humphrey, Daniel Button, Riley Feldcamp, Brandon Nowitzki, Trevor Vandahe. We had Matt Hinz, who was the NEC Assistant Coach of the Year. We had Aiden Humphrey, who was Defensive Player of the Year and Offensive Back of the Year. Co-defensive lineman of the Year was Brandon Nowitzki. Nobody has said these kids' names. Like, why? Where is the letters that we normally get for these all-conference kids saying, guys did a great job, we're so proud of you? Where's the letter for them going to state saying, great job, guys? Like, kids, you think that those things don't mean something to them? They really do. They see it. They see you recognizing them. And I want you guys to start doing that again. My son Trevor was in Mr. Right competition. We went to Mishipat the other day to give them the check for $2,415 for his friend's charity, who committed suicide in 2022. Like, that's what it's about. It's about helping others and stuff like that. So we need to work together. And I don't know how to get you guys to understand that. You sometimes need to put your differences aside and look at the kids. We are shaking them. And what are we showing them right now? This, this right here is showing them. If we unite, we can accomplish anything.
Okay, Melinda Clemmons, then?
New Patriots, also known as Northeast Wisconsin Patriots, has been around since 2008, founded by Dick Colt in Greenleaf. It's a nonpartisan, patriotic, constitutional, conservative, local grassroots group. I have been on the board since its founding. All people are welcome to our monthly meetings where invited speakers present on important issues of the day. We also, in election years, hold candidate forums where all candidates are invited. So in partisan elections, we invite the Republicans and the Democrats, and both can come. There is complete transparency in our group. It came to my knowledge that unfounded accusations have been flung at Angela Winker Hansen involving New Patriots. New Patriots does since many years operate a booth at the Brown County Fair, where we share literature and engage with fairgoers. It's a great public outreach. A few years ago, we started what we call chats with local officials. We invite every school board member in Brown County individually, and we invite every Brown County supervisor individually to come to our booth for an hour of their choice to engage with fairgoers. You all were invited and would have been very welcome to come. We are very excited about this opportunity to give local residents a chance to meet with elected officials. And it is also a chance for the elected officials to answer questions and hear concerns and comments from the public. There are no speeches, certainly no payments, no official representation of any board by any official. Not all that many elected officials come. They can't or will not take advantage of this opportunity for outreach, but every year a few do. Angela Winker Hansen has come once, a few, a few years ago. And in 2024, she wanted to come but was not able to come. And to my knowledge, that is the only times she has been in contact with us at New Patriots. I do wish that all local officials would come every year to our booth to meet with, with people, the public. With this, to say that Angela Winker Hansen is involved in a political group? That she has used her position on the school board advertising for a speech? I'm not even sure what that means. That she has spoken at the fair on behalf of the school board? All of that has no basis in fact and is utter nonsense. To say that she's promoting her personal agenda and using the board president's position for personal gain through New Patriots is at best misleading. Who is being truthful and transparent? With the current school board succeeding in stopping Title IX, which would have allowed in Wrightstown schools boys to be allowed into girls' locker rooms and also in girls' competitions, and with the board stopping what they call double taxation. and also in girls' competitions, and with the board stopping what they call double taxation? I cannot help but think and ask, who is now pursuing actions that could easily appear to have political objectives?
Thank you. The next person I have is Laura Atman.
Good evening, my name is Laura Atman, and I'm with Monch Liberty. I have two items that I'd like to address with the board. First, I want to acknowledge you did the right thing by not changing your policy in August for Title IX changes. You may be aware that there's currently eighteen lawsuits pending on Title IX. And two weeks ago, we had a court case in Eastern Kentucky that the court found the final rule of the Biden-Harris Title IX is vacated. What does that mean? They found the Department of Educated is seated as statutory authority, in other words, they did not have the authority to change the meaning of sex. The final rule violates the Constitution and the final rule is arbitrary implication. It's important to note that the final rule in question is vacated in its entirety. New requirements for handling grievances, training, record-keeping, et cetera, are invalidated and must be set aside. That is the legal requirement. The finding prevents the federal government from enforcing the 8124 rule, returning the rule to previous provisions as of 73124. Therefore, the compliance with the Biden final rule is no longer required to protect our district's access to federal funding. As a result, it's important to advise all that you maintain your current policies. For Wrightstown, I would, however, ask to improve in your current policy. Your policy states the board does not discriminate on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation and gender identity. I respectfully ask you to remove gender identity from this policy. Federal law does not recognize gender identity, and Wisconsin's state law does not recognize gender identity. While we understand there are case precedents that still exist, common sense must prevail. In the case of a male wanting to use a female private space, offer them a single-sex option, offer them a staff facility where at least exposure would be to adults, not our children. This exposure can cause minor children trauma, which school authorities seem to ignore across the nation. If you did this, it would at least show goodwill that you made an attempt to accommodate that individual while protecting the opposite sex, which would be the majority. The reality is school boards are going to be sued no matter what we do. All I ask is that you use common sense to do the right thing. The second item I want to address is the new district scorecards, and specifically on reading and math statistics. As you may be aware, they have changed the standards, and I wanted to share the impact it's had on your results. So in 2022, 23, you're reading, forty-seven point four percent of your children in this district read at grade level. The new stats in 23, 24 now show sixty-four point five percent. That's a seventeen percent increase, even though the tests didn't change and the children's, the learning environment, the curriculum did not change. In 2022 to 23 for math, sixty-three point eight percent operated at grade level. Now in math, in 23, 24, they scored at seventy-four point five. In other words, DLA went up seventeen percent, math went up ten point seven percent. And yet, my understanding is that the testing curriculum are the same or similar and do not correlate to that kind of an increase. And this is across the board in Wisconsin. I realize that DPI changed to cut scores. That lowers expectation, which drives outcomes higher. So while it is not at the school board's discretion, it is in your purview to educate parents that these numbers are inflated and that there is not an increase in their child's ability, and it's very misleading. The constant change in scorecard information on our grading system makes it very difficult for parents to truly understand how the kids are performing. Given them a false sense of improvement is wrong on someone's front. I don't know what the districts are doing to communicate these changes to their parents, but I hope that the board administrators and teachers have a plan on how to be transparent with the plan on how to educate parents so they truly understand the impact to their children. Thank you.
Thank you. This woman is Jennifer Boylan.
Good evening, members of the Boylan and those joining us today. My name is Jenny Boylan. I grew up in Wrightstown, I moved to Minnesota for college, I started my family in Appleton, but now I've returned to raise my three girls in the district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It's an honor to address the board, as I know you all dedicate yourselves to the future of our students, the success of our schools, and the well-being of our entire community. However, I would like to address an issue that has been growing within our district, one that weighs heavily on the hearts of many, the erosion of trust. Not only between members of this board, but also between the board and the community you serve. Trust is the foundation upon which effective decision-making is built. It allows us to work collaboratively, to share ideas openly, and to move forward together for the benefit of all. But recently, we've seen a shift, one that's not just internal but also external. There are concerns that decisions are being made behind closed doors, that there is a lack of transparency, and that voices, both from within the board and from the community, are not being heard or respected. This gap in trust is not just an inconvenience, it's an obstacle to achieving the shared goals we all care deeply about. Distrust begets more distrust, and the cycle becomes harder to break. Now I want to take a moment to acknowledge the work that has been done by this board. Despite the current challenges, there have been many accomplishments that you can be proud of. You approved Oracle Days of 4K, a new civics course at the high school, and international trips to foster appreciation of different cultures. Thank you to those of you who vote for policies that don't align with your personal beliefs but are willing to do what is best for all students. These efforts have made a positive impact on our district and they deserve recognition. But here's the truth. As much as these accomplishments matter, the effectiveness of your work is diminished when trust is compromised. The community needs to know that you are working in their best interests, that decisions are made transparently, and that every voice, whether from a board member or a concerned parent, is considered. Rebuilding trust won't happen overnight, but it is essential that you start. Here are a few key ways I believe you can begin that process. Open and honest communication. You must foster an environment where open dialogue is the norm, not just in public meetings, but in your internal discussions as well. It's critical that you move away from silos and start engaging more actively with each other, with the community, and with the students and families who depend on you. Transparency and decision-making. Your decisions affect over a thousand students and their families. When those decisions are made without full transparency, it creates suspicion and cynicism. You must commit to providing clear explanations for the choices you make and ensure that everyone involved has access to the same information. The community deserves to know the reasons behind decisions, the processes guiding them, and the long-term vision for our schools. It's not just about delivering information, it's about delivering it in a way that is accessible, understandable, and respectful of the community's concerns. Accountability. You must hold yourselves accountable, not just to your colleagues, but to the students and community you serve. Trust will not be rebuilt if you shy away from difficult conversations or avoid taking responsibility for past mistakes. If mistakes are made, acknowledge them, be open to feedback, work together to find solutions, and commit to doing better moving forward. Accountability builds credibility, and credibility builds trust. Fostering collaboration, not division. You need to remind yourselves that you all share the same goal, the success and well-being of our students. Teachers, administrators, parents, and board members are all on the same team. We cannot afford to let differences drive wedges between us. Let's create spaces where we can come together, not just as individuals, but as partners working towards a common cause. Rebuilding trust means putting aside egos and focusing on what truly matters, our students. In conclusion, I know that the work ahead won't be easy, and it won't be quick. Success won't be defined by one meeting or one decision, but by sustained, meaningful change over time. The strength of this board lies in its ability to come together, to learn from your mistakes, and to put the best interests of our students first. Trust is something that can't be demanded, it has to be earned. And it takes time. Together, we can move from division to unity, from distrust to collaboration, and ultimately to a brighter future for every student in our community. Thank you.
Erin Winker.
Good evening. My name is Erin Winker. I am the husband of school board president Angela Winker. I'm here tonight to give a different perspective on who Angela is and some insight on what it's like to see your wife being attacked for doing what is right. Who is Angela? Angela is the mother to our three kids, she is Nana to our three granddaughters, Auntie and niece to our nephews. She is a highly respected college instructor that has taught thousands of students over the last eighteen years, many of whom have become local business leaders and business owners themselves. She has consulted numerous businesses in the Green Bay area to help them grow and streamline their business. Angela is not a social butterfly that wants to be the center of attention, but when it comes to standing up for what she believes in, or when needed, Angela will stand up and fight for those that are afraid to speak for themselves. She is confident, strong, and well-educated woman, and that often is not very well-received by men that want to assert their dominance. I believe that is a big part of what is happening with this school board. These are just a few of the things you might not know about this amazing woman that I get to call my wife. As for me and my family, one of the hardest things for me to watch are people attacking my wife, knowing that what they are saying is not true. Oftentimes, that has been extremely difficult. For example, when Angela came home in fear for her safety after a closed-door meeting where Rain verbally assaulted her, she literally was in fear that he would come to her house and try to harm her. Why would anyone that is on the school board think that is acceptable behavior? Two men gaining up on a woman to try and intimidate her. So what did Angela do? Yes, she filed a police report to protect herself in the event that anything did happen. Then, rather than making a public scene, she sought advice on how she could counsel Rain and the board and try to bring them back together. In spite of every attack, she was always looking for ways to fix this divided board and community. As you can see, that hasn't worked so far because I don't believe certain people want to fix it based on their continued actions. For me to see and hear all the hatred and false misleading things being said about my wife is very disturbing. Knowing that three board members created a Facebook page to spread hate and misleading information should be truly disturbing to anyone that steps back and looks at it from the big picture. This is a school board, and they are setting an example of how to cyberbully someone that you disagree with. These are elected officials and former officials and a former superintendent that are actively promoting hate speech. You should be ashamed of yourselves. To read that a community member posts on Facebook, and I quote, "Angela and Jeff are frickin' idiots." I hope to God they go in the ditch on their way home from the meeting. I am praying karma comes for them. This is disgusting. If you support, or even so much as find one ounce of satisfaction from a statement like this, you should not be anywhere near our children or have any influence on how they are being taught. How would you feel if your child read something like this? How do you explain to them why someone would be so depraved to say this? You pray to God? I don't think that is something that God wants you to pray for. Fortunately, I believe the majority of this community is made up of good, honest, and rational-minded people that can see through the propaganda that is being passed around. Angela and I are truly grateful for the support the majority of the community has given us. And rest assured, I will continue to support my wife while she is on this board fighting for the things that matter to this community. Thank you.
The next person I have is Ron Zahn.
Good evening, Ron Zahn, resident of the district. And first of all, welcome to a good name, Ron Zahn. And I did your tenure here, scheduled to be brief, will be a joy for you and a benefit to the district. I'm not a social media guy, anybody who knows me will attest to that, but at times I am shown what's on the media site. And especially regarding this apparent effort to recall a board member. Much of what's on social media is not understandable. Many citizens are asking, what's going on? How do I find out? They suspect something isn't quite right. So I thought I'd best go to the website, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume, set up by those who are sponsoring the recall, R-W-C-E-S-D.com, whatever it is. Spent a couple of hours fishing around and trying to find solid information that warrants a recall. I found a lot of projection, things that the current board, and when I say current board, I'm referring especially to those recently elected. I find a lot of charges against them, which seem to fit better what I witnessed when I attended meetings of the old board. Rolling of the eyes when something was said that one didn't like, refusing to explain why one took a solid position on something, interrupting constantly when someone voiced a thought that you didn't agree with. Those are all things I used to see. And it seems on this website that that kind of thing is projected under the new board. I think that's backwards. Oftentimes, it's unclear, I read it again, don't know what's the point. Certainly not transparent, although the mission of the group claims that their goal is to shed light on the behaviors of certain school board members to help facilitate the recall of these members. I may have missed it, but I don't find multiple members listed on this website, nor what the things they've done that are so seriously bad is to warrant a recall. Special interests is mentioned a lot tonight and on the website. Still haven't been able to identify a single special interest that someone is self-serving in favor of. So, and also some things are just petty, little things that goodness, if they have them, talk in a brotherly-sisterly fashion with the person who did them and discuss it and see where things should go for going forward, rather than going to recall. So, a couple specifics as to why I say it's projection, it's unclear, it's not transparent, it's petty. Someone has well-covered what happened at the fair. I'm on the board of the group that sponsored that public information sharing event. And frankly, I'm a little offended that someone would think that about our group, which has been around for sixteen years and has done nothing but educate and help in the political arena. Then apparently, there's a board policy that says that, one minute, Ron, one minute and two, I have thirty minutes, but move. That attend all scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues and so on, policy 101445. And the horrible accusation against the chair is that she missed a board meeting. Oh my word, missed a board meeting. Then I found out, it was evident that because she's on the staff at an educational institution, there was a graduation and staff is expected to be there. I thought she was home playing games on TV or something. I think that's petty.
Ron Zahn.
Time is up? Okay. So we'll leave it at that, except that much of all for unity, but unity is dangerous.
Amber Cox.
We got the cameras here and John, if I could, you just stand up for a second and give the Wrightstown football team a round of applause. All right. So let's look at, I'm not familiar with Amber Cox. I'm here tonight to thank the board, and when I'm talking about the board, I mean the entire board. Your tireless efforts to support our students have very much appreciated. It's not an easy job, especially with temperatures rising the way that they are. Sitting before us are a group of individuals with a passion to do what they can do right for our students, our families, our teachers, and our neighbors. They all just hold different visions of what that looks like. I'm thankful that each of you is brave enough to stand up for the values that you believe best represent our community. We may not all agree on every issue, but the time and energy and personal sacrifice that you all made deserves to be recognized. I'd also like to thank the board for several specific efforts. Let's start with the genesis of much of the tensions, hoping transparency that pleases us. When the Wrightstown community voted on the referendum that was shared that the debt would be repaid over a twenty-year period, the referendum passed and some of the members of the prior board decided that it was in the best interest to repay the debt in half the time. That resulted in double taxation and your property taxes skyrocketing. As a result, the community used their voting power to reject those decisions. As many others have expressed in prior board meetings, I'd like to thank the members of the board that occurred in the community and committed to upholding the repayment terms initially communicated to taxpayers. Our taxes went down substantially, and I appreciate those that championed that effort. Next, I'd like to address another alternative room, Title IX. Over the past year, Title IX regulations were a topic of contention within many school districts nationwide. An incredibly grateful for the thoughtful way that our board approached the subject. For those that researched Title IX regulations and expressed their concerns from both sides, dialogue on these topics from both sides can help expose risks that are involved with adopting or not adopting the regulations. That said, I'm especially appreciative of those that challenged a hasty adoption of the regulations. Many Wrightstown parents expressed concern with bathroom locker room safety and a desire to protect sports for both men and women. It's important that we have board members that understand the difference between guidelines and mandates, between recommendations and the law. These skills enhance our board and allow our district to operate in a way that reflects the values of the majority of the Wrightstown community. My gratitude list would not be complete without addressing the countless ways that members of our board and some very gracious community members have demonstrated their commitment for transparency. For busy parents that are engaged in after-school sports, church activities, and other extracurriculars, it's undeniable by habit to have these meetings streamed. As a signal of respect for the community, the public comment time allowance was increased from three minutes to five minutes. As parents are equally responsible for the upbringing of their children, I would also extend my thanks to those on the board that prioritize the formation of the Human Growth Committee, providing parental and community oversight to particularly delicate curriculum. I'd like to encourage the board to continue their efforts in informing, engaging, and collaborating with parents of Wrightstown students. Wrightstown is a special community. Our students excel. Our teachers are some of the best in the nation, and we have parents in the community that show up. But we also have the school board that is taking all the weight of the world to advocate for our children and protect many of our shared values. My family message is one of support, especially for those of you that are shoveling the brunt of the burden of the recent poise. You deserve to be praised, thanked, and publicly celebrated for all you do. I'm so thankful to have you as part of the fabric that makes up this incredible schools community. Thank you.
The next question is Jason Gary.
Good evening, board. Back when Andy was hired a year and a half ago, prior to that, they opened up the applications posted for the new administrator in February. Is that in the process right now? Are we looking for our new superintendent?
I can't answer the questions right now.
Okay, but you can either.
Yes.
And then, looking through the invoices also that you approved here tonight, the December invoices for the attorney fees totaling twenty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's all.
Betty Kazin? Or Kazin? I can't read the writing. Betty?
Is it Kossick?
Kossick. I'm sorry about that.
It's pretty clear it was a teacher, so. Hello, my name is Betty Kossick, and I just here. I heard a lot of good things here tonight, and I agree that you should be celebrating, and I really like the football lady. But I'm here to deliver just a word of advice to the community of Wrightstown. I was a teacher for twenty-seven years, and I retired after Act Ten. For the last twelve years, I've been studying the good, the bad, and the ugly threats to public education, working as an advocate for public education. I'm a member of Green Bay Advocates for Public Education, which has been around since 2015. Our mission is to support teachers, students, parents, and districts. We monitor education news in Brown County, Wisconsin, and across the country and inform the public. The threats to public education have been going on for decades, right under our noses. Ever since I came back to northeastern Wisconsin to teach in 1999, I have only ever heard good things about Wrightstown schools. I have friends, teachers, and parents in this district. It isn't often that you only hear good things are going on in the district. That's very rare. But it is a truism. Now you're in a whole different situation. You have a problem. Unfortunately, you aren't the only one. There have been scandals of school board overreach in Raymond, Wisconsin, turmoil in Manitowoc, and distrust and divide in the peers. And those are just a few that are going on this year. People who go to extremes are throwing a wrench into the systems that we are accustomed to just running on their own. Unfortunately, that isn't good enough anymore. Voucher money is being siphoned down public schools across the country in the United States to the tune of billions of dollars. Just this morning, the president ordered school choice monies to be prioritized over public education money. Wisconsin voucher money is due to explode next year. Extremist flamethrowers are costing districts in other ways, too. It costs money and time to investigate, obtain legal counsel, and defend against all those flamethrowers. What is the end goal of these extremists? Just shutting down public education altogether. That is the goal. All the money that it costs to fund public education is looked upon greedily by the privateers that have been around for decades and are getting closer and closer to their goal of putting all that money into private hands, not responsible to the public in any way. They are in effect trying to shut down public education completely. I urge all of you, parents, teachers, and students alike, to get organized, talk to each other. It sounds like you're already doing that. Form plans. Decide what you want to achieve, even if it's just one small thing. Teachers, have you joined your union, Region Three, and taken on an active role? Parents, have you gathered together to ask each other what can we do together? Students, have you talked to your school board members about what you would like to see happen in your district? I urge you all to utilize the vast resources offered by the Wisconsin Public Education Network. Our advocacy group in Green Bay is a partner with them. So is Fox City's Advocates for Public Education Network in Potawatomi County. You could form your own advocacy group here in Wrightstown, and you could be a partner, too. Is your district a member of the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Schools? If not, I would encourage the district administration and the school board to join us. Thank you for your attention.
Mark Leonard.
My kids went here, and they settled under all the teachings, and it was a very exciting time. I'm gonna read this letter, because I actually wrote this and be printing in the paper a couple of weeks ago, but I got rejected. So I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna file that. You're wondering why this whole thing started, and it started because board member conduct. On July seventeen, 2024, at a public school board workshop, board member Ryan "Rain" Warner stood up and openly yelled and accused and pointed at fellow board members, most aggressively targeting school board president Angela Hansen-Winkler. These aggressive actions are in direct violation of school board code of conduct. It was noted that Andy Space, the board superintendent, did nothing to intervene in this verbal attack, despite the fact that the primary rule of superintendent is to bring the board together and ensure a smooth working environment in order to accomplish the business of making our schools better for our children and students. Mrs. Hansen-Winkler subsequently requested a face-to-face meeting with Mr. Warner and Andy Space, school board superintendent, to address the situation and create more collegiate working relationship for the future. At that meeting, which was called in the name of reconciliation, Mr. Warner picked up where he left off, joined by Mr. Space. Now together continued the unnecessary cursing and verbal assaults on Mrs. Hansen-Winkler. Mr. Warner's meeting recollection, which he shared publicly, is that Mrs. Hansen-Winkler walked out during a one-on-one meeting and did not like what was being said, or the meeting was not going how she wanted it to go. I believe this is the exact action every parent would want their child to do upon coming in such activity. Angela then justifiably and wisely contacted the district school attorney to report the incident. After her contact with the attorneys was made, this long-standing appointed law firm that three of the board members wanted to keep ceremoniously recommended opening the investigation. At that moment, everything went silent. At that moment, it became very apparent to me that what we're witnessing is a shadow government. The reason why everything got heated was Angela refused to put on the agenda an eighteen-million-dollar referendum for whatever. The conversation for the referendum started way back and was first heard, I think it was in a board meeting in March, where Nicole briefly mentioned the referendum. And that was, I know there were questions asked, there was no information given, it was denied for years, when the feasance was occurring that there was another plan. But at that moment, that was the first time that that referendum was ever spoken.
One minute, Mark.
At that moment, it was inconvenient that Nicole lost the election, but the conversations between Andy Space, Nicole, Carla, and the three board members about the referendum You cannot have a board split working on absolutely opposing views and ideas and having the superintendent work behind the scenes to undermine the majority of the board. Given that that's the case, this is probably gonna be ugly for a while, because the majority of the board can't speak of anything, because it probably implicates Andy. And until open records requests are complete and I get information that I asked for as of January second, I have yet to get any information, which means whatever I'm requesting must be homed.
Time, Mark.
Thank you.
John Curtis.
I hope I can retract all that everyone here. Just a couple lines I wanted to talk about tonight. One is a safety concern that I kind of have. I got boys that practice early in high school, Monday, Wednesday nights with wrestling. Sunday, we got baseball clinic. The lights in the parking lot are not turning on, so I know that may have something the school can address, but I'm just thinking everyone will wear. It'd be nice if we had a velvet parking lot and you can see the little, you know, three-foot tall kids running around. Second item I'd like to address, so a month ago in December, school board meeting, I had asked several questions of the board. Angela eventually had responded back to me. I think there's some miscommunication or misunderstanding on the specifics I was asking. You got really hung up on me thinking I was getting details for the specific investigation of Mr. Space. What I wanted were more general questions. I highlighted that a couple of times over email. Eventually, you had just forwarded it on to the attorney, at which point I quit out. Not interested in attorney fees or emailing him. So I'll restate those questions, hope I can get a response at some point. So generically, what does it take to open an investigation? Who's the decision-maker there? Who needs to be aware? When the investigation is open, is there a budget set? If not, why not? I think that's kind of important. I feel like some of the spending that we've seen has exceeded what we've done. When I also asked, we hit legal limit budgets? Where's the money gotta come from? I believe that would be the general fund. And I asked, you know, what are things we've spent out of the general fund recently? Ultimately, what are we taking money away from the fund investigation thing? So rephrase those questions, hope I can get a response back on those. And ultimately, if I wanna keep it quick here, wrap it up, there's no winners here. All right? We have the recall going on, we had Andy Space leave, Ron welcome, coming kind of at a low point here, but ultimately, whether the recall is successful or not, it's not a win on either side. All right? The takeaway here is, there is an issue. The board needs to work together, come together and resolve it. Some of the things I've seen online, some accusations on the sides, you know, this is not a political piece. I don't know how many times I've gotten thrown, oh, it's the liberals in my face. I'm not a liberal. There's issues at play, there's transparency we want. Angela, in press release, you had noted, the voters voted, they want drastic change. Wrightstown's a great district, right? We're one of the top schools in Brown County, one of the top twenty-five, three schools in the state. I don't know what drastic change needs to happen when we're this successful. So for me, and I think someone else had noted, it'd be great to get that transparency. What's your six-month plan? You started rolling things out. What's your goal? What's the end goal? Right? Football champs, they've got the end zone they're looking for. What's your end zone? Thank you.
Deborah McGinnis? Uh, yeah. Okay.
I don't normally like speaking in things like this. Maybe six years ago, the thing that was most concerning, we're not answering yet, the thing that was most concerning in this was when I heard accusations of budget money. Budget money always sorts itself out, its numbers. When everything comes out, we're gonna know that, I believe, that it's not true.
Hey, now. I don't normally like speaking in things like this.
That's okay.
Maybe six years ago, the thing that was most concerning, we're not answering yet. The thing that was most concerning in this book, when I heard accusations of budget money. Budget money always sorts itself out, its numbers. When everything comes out, we're gonna know that, I believe, that it's not true. I sat on a board with the Indian Trails Association, having to worry about private land that was, we were being taxed for. I sat on a board with the Wisconsin Children's Museum when they were a pledging organization at Big Park Square Mall. I did foster care for twenty years, had tons of kids through our house. There are a lot of things that are said that can't be said when you're going together trying to solve something. They can't all be said. I had to deal with inclusion during the Bush administration. I had a son who needed extra teaching and none of the teachers wanted to do it. We had to talk, we had to have talks, those things have to happen. I think we're showing our kids in this whole thing, a lot of anger, which I don't think is needed. I think there needs to be discussion, yes, there needs to be answers, yes. I loved Mark's comments, wherever you were, Mark, well thought out. And again, things that you can't talk about sometimes until things all come to a head. I feel personally, everybody should stop, breathe, and let the board do their job. Let the board do their job. I have sat on boards, I have seen things happen, let the board do their job. And I rest my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I got everybody, but if I missed anyone, please let me know. Oh, yeah. Andy, one? Andy?
I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
I see you there.
I had a presentation written, however, I think Penny Bardo and I have the same speechwriters, so I'll leave it at that. You did a good job, Penny. The theme we have heard over and over tonight is, as a board, you all have blame for causing divisiveness. And the community is overwhelmingly asking you all to work together to repair that. And if you don't, you will be held accountable in our upcoming elections. You all have full support of our engaged public, who are here advocating for our kids. Remember, you were elected to provide the kids the best education we can deliver. Second, hopefully the meeting can be held in a venue more suitable for everyone. It's hard to hear standing up in the hallway, and I know for claiming to have a transparent and open board, it's very tough to do when people can't participate or listen in those, in the meeting. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Mr. Baker for the work he's done turning around the struggling ban program. There's an energy and excitement that I don't want to forget.
Anybody else that I may have missed on this sheet? Okay, alright, well, I just wanna tell you thank you for speaking. I know there's a lot of emotions and it's, you know, it's very hard for anybody to be speaking. I'm sorry? They can't hear me?
Can you speak up?
I just wanna thank everybody for attending. I understand that we have a lot of emotions in the room, it's hard for people to speak when they're under emotion, and I definitely empathize with that. Everything that has been stated, we're gonna take full heartedly, and we're gonna try really hard as a board to work together. One of the things that Ron is gonna work with on, with us on, is common commitments as a board, starting next week. But I do appreciate all the feedback and everything that has been shared with us. I can feel the energy and the support and the care that you have for the students, and that's what really hits home, I think, with me and the majority of the board members. So I appreciate your time, and we will make sure we listen and try to work together as a board. On that note, any other questions or comments, feel free to reach out to any of us, particularly, I would say, reach out to Ron, as I think he will do a really good job bringing our community together. So, thank you. The next thing that we have on the agenda here are the Board Education Minutes. And do I have a motion to bring to the floor the Board of Education Minutes for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as well as January seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes, as well as January fifteenth workshop meeting, workshop minutes?
I'll make a motion to bring meeting minutes to the floor.
Do I have a second?
I'll start.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The floor is now open for any discussion or questions on any of the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the January seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes? And do I have a motion to approve the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve all three of those meeting minutes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And anybody, we're all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor the availability for space of open enrollment?
I'll make a motion to bring availability of space for open enrollment.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Who's that pointing to?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the floor is now open for discussion on open enrollment. Anybody have any questions for discussion on open enrollment? Time to slow very far, we're going over again. In our last workshop meeting, we had already discussed again, vote on it. Go ahead, Dan.
So I put an administrative recommendation together based on this. You did at your last meeting vote, but the agenda did not say it was for a vote, it just said it was for a discussion. And so technically, what we need to do is put it back on the agenda with, for a vote, so that it's noticed to the public that it'll be a vote. We noticed it at the last meeting that it was just for discussion. So, I'm making an assumption that you're gonna still approve it. You approved it at the last meeting, seven-zero. The memo is up on the screen where it is. Put a little background in what I just shared, talking about why. I believe it's in the best interest for you as a board to approve it again, because this time it's in the agenda, so the public is made aware of it, that you're gonna vote on it. You weren't at the last meeting, that agenda didn't say you were gonna vote, it just said you're gonna discuss. So that's why I recommend that we put it on there. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hillary, aye?
This month or last, or this meeting or the last one?
Hillary, aye? So, do I have a motion to approve the space for open enrollment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
I'll make a motion to approve availability of space for open enrollment.
And do I have a second?
I'll start with it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we have on the agenda is Summer School Coordinator for twenty twenty-five recommendation. Do I have a motion to bring the Summer School Coordinator for twenty twenty-five recommendation to the floor? Thank you, Cliff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I open the floor now for anybody to discuss the Summer School Coordinator for twenty-five, twenty-five recommendation by Ron.
Did everybody have an opportunity to read from the packet, the recommendation? I had it up on the screen. Just a quick summary, we have a former employee who was in charge of this, as part of their duties, they left the school district. Just before school started, that position was not filled, and those responsibilities were divided up amongst a variety of staff members. Summer School was one of them. And so, based on input from the administrative team and the staff, we have a person on staff that is interested in this. Mrs. Katie Hayes, she is our Level Media Specialist. And what we're looking for here is approval of Katie to be the twenty twenty-five Summer School Coordinator.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Katie, how do you pronounce her name?
Hayes.
Hayes, as presented for the twenty twenty-five Summer School Coordinator.
I'll make a motion for Katie as presenting.
And do I have a second?
I'll start.
And to ring, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the twenty-three, twenty-four audit report. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor the twenty-three, twenty-four audit report? Thank you, Tony. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? At this time, I open the floor for the discussion of the audit report, you have Dan Kerber Rose.
So, Board Members tonight, we have David Minch from Kerber Rose, he's a lead auditor. They performed our audit report this year, the district is in excellent financial position. But I'll turn it over to Dave to kind of go through his process, just so that you understand what happened and how we're gonna go and move forward.
Alright, thank you, Dan. As Dan mentioned, my name is David Minch, I'm one of the government audit shareholders at Kerber Rose. This is the fourth or fifth year, I personally worked for the district, I know Kerber Rose worked for the district for a number of years before I joined Kerber Rose. We probably worked for about fifty-six new districts across the state of Wisconsin, so I've got a lot of experience working with them, and also see a lot of different things among school districts. But first and foremost, I just wanted to thank Dan and also the rest of the people in the business office. Once again, we showed up to do the audit, everything was prepared, everything was reconciled, it makes for a very efficient audit process on our standpoint. I just think Dan deserves some recognition in regards to all the hard work that his team do to prepare for the audit. So tonight, we're gonna go through at a high level, kind of a thousand-foot view of some of the financial highlights for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We issued two documents at the conclusion of all our audits. The larger one of the two being the annual financial report. The smaller one of the two is the management report or the management communication letter. We're gonna start by going over the annual financials, financial report first. And I'll refer to printed page numbers and also PDF page numbers for those who do that follow along. The first page that we're gonna look at is printed page number one, or PDF page number five. This is the independent auditors' report, assumption this is why the school district and every other municipality in the state of Wisconsin has an audit done, and that is to receive an opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion is listed or stated in the second paragraph on this page. It states that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects to respect the financial position of the governmental activities. Each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the district as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. So in other words, this is a clean or unmodified opinion, the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors on your financial statements. So, very positive, very good news for the district in the area of the audit. Next, we'll look at printed page number six, or PDF page number eleven. This is the balance sheet for all of the governmental funds that the district has. All of the major funds are presented individually on this page, and the non-major funds are included in the aggregate. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out, the total cumulative fund balance at June thirtieth was approximately nine point nine million dollars. Whereas the largest component of this is the general fund, and that ended the year with an unassigned fund balance of almost six point seven dollars this year. So, overall, the district as a whole appears to be in a very strong operating financial position, much of the same as the general fund, which is your main operating partner this year. Skipping down two pages, we'll look at printed page number eight, the PDF page number thirteen. This is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds, or in other words, this is your income statement for those funds. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out on this page. Overall, total fund balance didn't decrease for all of the funds combined, approximately thirteen thousand dollars. Now, this is largely a planned decrease as we spend down various resources, you know, related capital projects that we borrowed for in previous years. But one important highlight, just something to point out here, is that the general fund fund balance did increase approximately one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars this year. And we'll briefly look at the budget actual for the general fund, but I think this is largely a product, you know, just good spending, very good budgeting on the district's standpoint. So again, just another very positive aspect of the district. Let's jump to that budget actual page now, this is printed page forty-two, or PDF page number fourteen. This is the budget actual, we show the original and the final budgets, and the actual results. Overall, there's nothing on this page that I feel warrants additional discussion from my standpoint. There's various things in here that we work with Dan to make sure the district's in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles and also government accounting standards. One of those items being how true leases in all governmental entities right now, so you might look at that and see that there's a, you know, a cap or an offer lease noted on here. This is something that we work with in other districts, so I'm just making sure we're in compliance. But overall, you know, from a revenue and expense standpoint, you know, when you're looking at a total budget of approximately sixteen million dollars, you're very close to actuals when you look at the budget actuals. Does anybody have any questions on this page?
Just to clarify, this is from last year, twenty twenty-four, that was in, including July and now.
Next, we'll look at the internal control report, this is on printed page number fifty, or PDF page number fifteen. As auditors, we're not required to audit the district's internal controls, but we're required to keep an eye on our planning and performing our audit. And with that, anytime we identify an issue or a weakness, we need to evaluate it to see if it meets the definition of tier weakness, a significant deficiency, or something that matters. And you have one finding that we consider to be a significant deficiency, and I'll provide some context behind this. This is a reaccurring finding for the district, and in fact, this is a finding that every single district that we work with, in the state of Wisconsin, receives. And that is the financial reporting finding. Standards, government accounting standards changed about ten years ago now, and they simply state that you as management of the school district are responsible for the preparation of the annual financial report. And if you can't do that, you've got two options, either contract with your auditor and then essentially receive this finding, or hire a third party to prepare the financial statements in its entirety to give to your auditor to audit, essentially. The later the two options is never cost effective. So, of all the fifty-six districts that we work with in the state, we assist them with the preparation of the annual financial reports and all of the same. I like to treat this finding more so as a reminder to everybody in this room, that even though we assisted the preparation, you're still responsible for the fair consultation. So, everything that's in here is compiled based on the district's markers, and so that's what we audit and assist with the calculation. Any questions on that finding? Alright, the last report that we'll cover in the annual financial report is the independent auditors' report on compliance for each major federal and state program. And this is on printed page number fifty-two, or PDF page number sixty. This is, you know, as I stated, our report on the compliance for each major federal and state program. Since the district expended over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually in federal expenditures, we're recording a federal single audit. And the state of Wisconsin, we have a federal single audit or we're recording a state single audit. So what this entails is a lot of transactional or detailed testing to make sure what the district is claiming under the grant's mandatory test is allowable and eligible as part of that grant agreement. So I'd like to report that for the federal grant and the state grants that we looked at, there was no issues of not compliance. So everything that the district is spending their money on is allowable, you know, per the grant agreements. So again, this is a very positive aspect of the district. With that, that's all that I was going to talk about in regards to the annual financial report. Does anybody have any questions, before we just briefly talk about the management communication report?
Pause my questions, Lynn.
Okay. So lastly, I'm just going to comment on the Management Communication Letter. This is a standardized communication to the most part that we issued conclusion of all of our audits. For the most part, it's just an overview of how our audit went. It does include disclosures related to the significant estimates that were allowed to account for in the financial statements. And these are all set forth by standards. These aren't, you know, the district or your auditor saying, I think this is an estimate. These are all things that are based and substantiated by either actuaries or, you know, estimates as far as useful rights. Again, and it's very common that all of those amongst all municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. And then it just reiterates the finding that we talked about, the financial reporting finding. And then if there were any additional matters that we felt that weren't an additional disclosure or discussion, we would disclose in this letter. And once again, there was nothing that we found needed to be presented in the Management Communication Letter. All right, any questions?
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen?
Yep. It would be coming through. Do you have a question? This is not the best one of this.
Yep.
So if that's the district has investment, then Wisconsin investment here is a lot of that. Six point two million dollars. I'm curious if you can give me a little insight to what that is for and how we can use that money.
Sure, so.
What about?
Yep, so the district utilizes what we call pooled cash. Meaning that, you know, each fund in governmental entities is essentially like its own business almost, right? And so rather than retract the cash in each one of those funds, but we use pooled cash. Those are the resources that are accumulated there. So most likely, what was done is that Dan's worked with the bank and other, you know, the investment advisors to say, you know, this is how much cash we need in a checking account, we're going to cash flow the district. The WISC investment series and other, there's actually four different WISC type of investment accounts you can invest in. It's paying very high interest rates over the past year. So, you know, the district did, along with a lot of other districts, are very proactive in earning additional interest and really utilizing and recognizing the value of what you have. Moved money into the WISC accounts, the Wisconsin Local Government Investment Plan, the LGIP. That's another very common investment vehicle. It's like an investment, but it's very conservative, meaning there really isn't any risk or any volatility in market. And I mean, if the district can utilize that simply by authorizing a transfer out of your WISC account into your general checking. Yeah, it's not, it's not tied down, anything like that. It doesn't have a term on it.
So if we have to use that money for something to cover expenses, we could.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's really this.
Because reading, reading this, it says that, you know, we can, the one has a fourteen-minute loan investment day period with a one-day business patrol. And the other says allows check ready approach, which is.
Yeah, so there's four types of investment vehicles within WISC. And Dan's going to know a little bit more about it than me, but it's very important.
That's the last question of that is, do we know, I think that fixed income series, what's the fixed rate of return? As I understand from you saying that it's a very good rate. And what that maturity date is on that? Is that something with about three months, six months, a year? Or who was general on that, I guess?
Sure. So we, we invest a series of dollars based on promotions or rates that are guaranteed by the WISC individual that with, individuals at WISC. So we do our cash flow projections and understand if, like, it's tax season right now. So we got a flush amount of money from our municipalities. We don't need all of those dollars at this moment to operate the business. So we will invest those dollars for a period of time until we need them and then bring them back into the general fund. So there are liquid accounts there that we can move money back and forth on a day's notice that get a higher rate of interest than our local bank at Greenleaf Bank. And there are also longer-term investments that we, from time to time, take advantage of. A three-month, a six-month, usually not much longer than six-month because I don't like to have our money tied up for longer than that unless it's a smoking deal. But our, our Fund Forty-Six dollars are invested there as well. And then when we had referendum dollars, those were invested there as well. So taking advantage of the higher interest rates to bring more cash into the district.
Now, when you say referendum dollars, Dan, how many of those referendum dollars were invested in that? Out of curiosity.
All of them were invested.
All of them were in that?
Yep. Yeah, so when we, when we borrowed twenty-eight point seven million dollars, we weren't going to make a payment or buy anything specifically while the construction process and bidding process was happening. So that was invested over time to maximize the dollars that we have available. And those dollars from the referendum were able to go back in and provide more projects at that time.
Is this an average balance, Dan? Is this what there's normally in this account?
This would be end of, end of the, end of the year, so.
Yeah, June thirtieth. So as Dan alluded to right now, the district has a bunch of cash, right? Because your main source of revenue is what you're receiving right now. So, you know, having this sort of type of liquid cash or short-term investments like this is really important to June thirtieth because districts don't see an influx in cash until October, November. So it's really important that you're in the cash flow. I mean, we're seeing more and more districts, even short-term viral, when that's September, October, November timeframe. And all that does is add costs.
And that's the reason I bring this up is because when I got on this board, I was brought forward from the past superintendent, the superintendent at the time, that this district was in dire need of coming to a operational referendum of one hundred to one hundred and fifty five million dollars. So that's why I asked this question is because, you know, we need to know what's going on, what's here, where we're at. So that's why I asked this question. If that's something we needed to access, we have that money. That's where we're going to get from instead of going back to the people to ask them for the sponsor.
Yep, so it's really important to understand that this is a hard time. This is a hard stop date of June thirtieth.
Yep.
You know, when you look at, and I know Dan does a great job at this, at looking at cash flow projections, right? Where we really understand that the districts that come in, very little cash comes through the door until October, November. It's that, you know, Dan does a great job at filing claims timely. There's districts who file title claims and idea claims once a year. So I think about that, there ain't any cash in the door. So, yeah, you know, I think overall, the district's general fund fund balance is in a good position, right? I mean, it's, it's a balance. You chop it down and then you just want to model, I mean, we're starting with a questionnaire period where I'm sure budgets are higher, right? Everything's costing more, so.
So thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
So I'd just like to share that Dan provided me, what he explained, the Fund Forty-Six investments. And Fund Forty-Six, for people who do not know, it's a, it's a fund that is set aside for building maintenance and improvement. And what I saw from the data that Dan we produced, some very, very excellent investment tools. And the interest rates they is in the bank on. Is that correct, Dan? So I see the hard work. I saw several years of this information and excellence and thinking.
Any other questions?
Okay, if there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve the Kerber Rose 2024 Audit Report as presented? Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next thing on the agenda would be finance. Do I have a motion to bring to the floor to discuss the possible role of finance on the monthly bills listing and receipt? So do I have a second? Yep, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, the floor is open now for any discussion or question on the bills listing.
I have a question about the community health worker coming out of the wellness fund. I thought that was a fund, is that a reason why it's not tied here in Fund Eighty?
So the other question.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The twenty thousand dollar for the community health worker?
Yep.
It's out of the general fund, is it Fund Eighty?
It is, it is out of Fund Eighty.
Okay. So then the other question was about the wellness center. Did we have an account for the wellness center, Dan, that we took out of?
Yep, wellness center is out of Fund Eighty as well, yep. So I think Corey, I don't know if it's scrolling, Corey, I think if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of this document. So this here will show you the balances that were taken from each fund. So Fund Eighty and Community Service Fund.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I still have questions that I want to send to email, but I haven't given the response that was received yet about looking for legal communications text that typically as a board member, we would all have. And then on the bills listing, if I totaled it, it looks like there's thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents of charges that, again, we changed our policy to policy six thousand for finances that the school wouldn't charge over fifty thousand without board approval. And now we're at, gosh, well over that. But all of the charges, there's still no explanation, email, or anything that you can come up with. Any correspondence about this that I asked about?
Yeah, I addressed this in the last board meeting you asked, and I will state again. Out of that approximate thirty-five thousand dollars, twelve thousand is in from Fund Eighty, Title Nine, Open Records Request Process, and some board governance. So it's not all part of the investigation. We can do an itemized statement for you if you want to see specifically what is related to the investigation. And don't interrupt. We can all, we can do what we, we can do an itemized statement where we can have Dan break this out and say what is contributed to the investigation and what is contributed to the regular school business that we would have. So the thirty-five thousand dollars is not all contributed to the investigation. It's doing business work as usual that would cover the Fund Eighty, the Title Nine, the Open Records Request Process, as well as board governance. There's also an eighteen eighty-five dollar new charge for the recall petition, five ready. And one of the things that we need to look at is to see if we're going to get any more legal fees in relation to the recall. So with regards to legal fees, I think what's best in order to be transparent is that we can break down from the time of September to present what each of these legal fees are for so that everyone has an understanding.
Why are we occurring for the recall that I, sorry?
Pardon me?
Why are we occurring fees from the district for the recall that I started?
You would have to answer that.
What are we seeking legal for?
You would have to answer that.
If the council wants you permission to legal provide, may I ask this?
Well, I can call Jim RACI, but then I will be accused for contacting legal. But I do have a invoice that says that the filing of the recall petition that you did is eighteen eighty-five. So we can either ask clarification for legal or you can contact them. You initiated the recall, this is an incurred fee. I believe you're working with a legal representative there already. And I would ask for clarification and bring that back to the board.
My question is to go back on my answer.
I guess I'm, I'm not quite following because I didn't reach out to RACI and ask for it.
So you do have another legal represent helping you with the recall petition. So my recommendation would be.
What are you talking about?
My recommendation would be for you to reach out with the legal counsel that is overseeing the recall petition and is charging you for this. Or we can work with Ron and Ron can do that on our behalf. So that's what, that's the communication, I guess. So like I said. I'm just trying to understand all this from Von Briesen is the statement that I received.
So it's a governmental process, right? So when you. So. Okay, so, so, okay. So when you put something forward, it needs to be vetted, checked, processed. And maybe that's where some of it's coming from? I would assume that there's, you know.
I'm going to agree with Ryan on this. This is something that the court considers and should have been.
It's council permission should have been.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't have taken five dollars for my attorney to tell you that.
Well, let's seek clarification on the both sides. And we can share that with everybody. So I, I would really like to know, you know, why we have eighteen eighty-five dollars go for the recall, why should we do this well? So let's, let's look in that, to that and ask for it.
And that's something you can follow up on, Ryan?
Can I reach out? Do I need to reach out to Ron or not?
Okay, I can do it. I can work with Ron. We can give you the bill and show you.
I can do that if you want.
I do.
So I guess what I was talking about, if you're done with that conversation, but kind of circle back is as a board, the, we weren't told when legal counsel was brought forward. So I would just like the communications that I, that the whole board was concerned that for all of the communications with legal counsel. So for whatever they are. So this isn't something new that I'm asking. I'm asking for back since July to know what the legal, like, the emails dated, emails, texts, anything with legal counsel communication that you had. So I can understand what.
It's an open records request?
It is not as a board member. I am required to get that, just like all of the other board members.
And under the investigation, things need to be redacted. So if you want me to pursue that, I will need to come and tap legal counsel for that.
It shouldn't be redacted as a school board member.
No, no, if there's personnel information, the school board members should not. They're going to be able to protect our teachers. We have to protect all the employees here. So there's certain information that we need to know at a higher level. Let the administrators wrong with what they're doing, but names should not be shared. And that is something that is on the document. It's going to have to be reviewed, it's going to have to be redacted.
So it took you over six months to tell me that, that I've been asking?
Well, it's just simple.
I guess I was confused about the community is saying transparency. I'm just asking for information so I know what's going on.
You asked this two weeks ago. And then I just went to WSP convention and they say we cannot share the legal tran, the communication with board members. So I mean, if we need to have this clarified, then we can go ahead and bring RACI in here, but there's going to be charges.
Well, I don't know what the charges are now, so.
You're bringing me here and saying they are going to give you those charges.
WSP says that we have other reasons to board members that have those communications.
Well, I'll pull it up on my phone if you want me to.
Excuse me, we're getting into weeds here. We're talking about bill listing. If we have questions about bill listing, then just ask the attorney for clarification and send them to board members. So I propose that we move forward, call the question to approve the bill, the bill listings.
So if we move forward, you're saying there will be no more legal fees? I mean, our budget was originally fifteen thousand. We're way over that and some of us don't even know why.
Melinda, I'm trying to tell you that as a board, and what we can do truly is we can break off these legal fees to tell you what is school law, what is actual business, and what is part of the investigation. We can do that. I mean, Ron is going to do that, Dan can do that too. As far as saying that we're not going to incur any more legal fees is not, is not something that we can promise because if we have any, no, anyway, don't interrupt me. If we have any other things that take place, whether it's, you know, a student issue, a teacher issue, personnel, whatever, we still have to seek legal counsel. I cannot guarantee that. So I think the best thing is to move forward with, let's have a workshop that we can go over every legal fee and what it was for to help you answer that question. As far as learning more about the, the communication between legal and the board, I have to go to RACI for that as I was instructed by RACI that things need to be redacted.
Okay.
Okay?
What I am asking is just to be told ahead of time. Not that we won't be going to legal, because we put it into policy to get the school that has to get our own. Not that we won't be going to legal, because we put it into policy to get the school that has to get our okay, but now we're at like seventy-five thousand dollars between the last fees and this fee. And all I'm saying is, just like way back when I asked, why aren't we being told before legal is contacted? This is what, what you're talking about way back. I wanted to talk about that policy, to put that in the policy that we would know ahead of time. Typically that it's done for the board.
And I was under advisement.
We can move forward, don't interrupt, please. We can move forward. We can move forward, but all I want is the information, all I want is the transparency.
And I'm under advisement that when you ask for that legal counsel policy on the agenda, that we couldn't put it on there because it would interfere with the investigation. The answers I give you, you do not like. So that's what, that's what this is about. So we can continue to argue, or we could do a takeaway here, do this offline, and try to figure out what we can do to get you to answer the questions properly.
I call it what?
I answered the, we're having a conversation, please don't stop.
Okay.
I asked and showed you exactly the paragraph wording I wanted to add to the policy. That was not the response you gave to me.
That is the response I gave you in an email.
No.
And it was from RACI. So we can sit here and go back and forth, I'm not going to argue. I will take it under advisement, and we will make sure that you get the information that you need and so that you fully understand what you're asking. Do I have a motion to approve the finance for the monthly bill listings and receipts?
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly bill listings and receipts?
And do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call. Those that accept or make a motion to approve the finance. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Tony?
Yep.
Angela, yes? Melinda?
No.
Rain?
No.
Tiffany? Edmy?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, next thing I leave out on the agenda is administrative and board reports. So Ron, can you take over?
Yeah, I made an attempt to try to introduce myself and get to meet as many of you as I could when you guys, excuse me, came in. Uh, for those who I wasn't able to do that with, my name is Ron Sari. I am the interim superintendent. Uh, today is the tenth day on the job. So I'm keeping track of the date and what we're able to accomplish. Uh, I, I want to make it clear, I work for the full board. I'm not going to get into picking sides. I am going to be respectful to the full board. Uh, I'm going to provide information to the full board and work to be as transparent as I possibly can. Um, we do have a board information request policy. Uh, I think maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll share that at one of our workshops, and we can talk about that. Um, I also wanted to talk about the chain of command a little bit. If you have an issue or a question, feel free to, uh, comment to me, to send it to me, and I can then filter through the administrative team to get you the answer as quickly as I can, can. My approach to leadership, the administrative team is, is learning, and I'm learning here, but to take a collaborative approach, working with people. I believe in teamwork, and I'm here to work as a team member with you and to help us work as a team. Uh, I'm here to listen. This hundred-day plan that I'm going to pull up here in a minute is really a, a learning and listening tour where I'm interviewing, listening to a lot of people, taking notes, and trying to learn as much as I can about our organization, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, what we can do better. Uh, and I believe in no surprises. And so I, my goal is to work with the board to, uh, I don't want to do a gotcha surprise to you, and, uh, I don't want you to do a gotcha surprise to, to myself as well. Um, I've been very busy these last ten days with one-on-one meetings. Uh, I think I have, well, I, I've got part of the board. I think I've had three one-on-ones with the board, so I'm working to schedule four more so that I can have my one-on-one with everybody. Most of the administrative team, I've been able to do that. Uh, we, I have approximately twenty-five community members on my, my list to meet. Some of you are here. Uh, when I meet with people, I ask, are there other people in our community or in our district that would be a good resource for me to get to know and meet? Like, uh, Jack here today, he'll be a valuable resource, uh, as a community member and, and former principal here, former administrator as well. Um, we have approximately fifteen record requests in the docket right now. And so I'm going to meet with Dan tomorrow. We're going to have an extensive meeting. I'm going to take those over from Dan, and I'm going to work on trying to compile them as quickly as possible. I can't guarantee I'll be able to get them all up by the end of the week, but I'm going to work hard to try and get them out as soon as possible. And as soon as I get a record request, I'm going to communicate to you that I received it and give you a timeline of what I am anticipating, the length of time it'll take for me to produce that information for you and get it to you. Um, several of us last week were in Milwaukee at the WSB, the School Board Association Convention. Um, I put together a landing page that I'll be sharing with you as a board, and I'm hoping at either the next board meeting or a, a future workshop that we'll be able to have a conversation. You'll have some time to digest and look at, uh, like, for instance, I'm putting in there my notes from all the sessions. And if you attended a session, please send me your notes, and I'll include it on that landing page. And, uh, we can all learn from each other that way, make it a little bit more meaningful. Instead of me taking the information and I'm just keeping it to myself, we'll share it amongst us so that we can get the best curriculum and best... Um, our next meeting is next week on Wednesday. It's a workshop, so it's not a business meeting like this meeting, it's a workshop. Unfortunately, we will have some business items on that. My goal is not to have business items on the workshop, but because of the timeliness and what I'm learning, and, you know, I just want to introduce a, another gentleman here. Mr. Cory Jeffries, Jeffers, uh, is our new IT, uh, director. And he's been on, uh, working here for the last two months. He's brand new. Our whole IT department is brand new. Um, so I welcome him, he's doing a great job. He is, he's gifted, and, you know, this is my thirty-fourth year in education, and I can honestly say, honestly say, and I, I never told him this, I'm trying to embarrass him, he is the best IT director that I've ever been around. He is talented, and he has... So at the next meeting, the, the main part of what I want to do, and, and, uh, Angela noted it earlier, I want to work with the board to create common commitments. The things that we all as a board will agree to, uh, as we engage with each other at the table. You know, we have children here, we're role models, and I want us to be good role models for our community. Uh, so we're going to create common commitments. I'm going to show what you, what we did as an administrative team in creating our common commitments. Uh, as an example, I want to talk about communication strategies. How, what are your expectations of me on how I communicate with you? What kind of information, a little bit like what Melinda is saying. She wants notification ahead of time with legal counsel. Um, and I can do that to the best of my ability. There may be times where I'm calling, I'm letting you know on a daily basis because different things come up. Uh, we get a return on our investment when we get legal counsel ahead of an issue instead of after an issue. Earlier in my career, I would do it after trying to be stingy and save money, and it would, it could make an issue turn into a bigger issue, whereas if I can get some counsel ahead of time. Now, doing this for seventeen years, I don't need to do it as often as I used to, but there are things that come up, and, um, I mean, these, our principals are talking to me on a daily basis. Ron, I want to give you a heads up, this is going on. Ron, I want to give you a heads up, that, that happened today. And, um, there will be times I'm going to let you know. But that's what I kind of need to gauge from you. What are those items, and every board is different, that you want me to bring information to you ahead of time? I don't want you to go to a grocery store, you're getting groceries, and people are coming up to you and saying, what's going on with X, Y, Z? I want you to know ahead of time. So that communication strategy will be a very important, uh, conversation. And then there's two things, one, uh, that Dan or Cory is bringing to me, and the other is that my admin team is bringing to me, that I want to bring to you ASAP. Uh, the first is curriculum. I want to have a curriculum conversation at our workshop next week, um, in regards to that topic. And also a technology conversation. Uh, Cory came to me with some, uh, important information, we want to share that. Cory's preparing a brief report, and I don't want these to be very lengthy, uh, but one of them in probably technology, I'm going to ask, consider possibly action. And I don't want to bring things to you and expect action right away, especially at a workshop, but for, for the technology conversation, it may require an action, so we'll post it that way. The curriculum is not going to require an action, it's the plant a seed. I want to talk a little bit, the, the next, uh, item here briefly I want to discuss is the hundred-day plan. As you're aware, I shared with you a very brief five-page, four-page, uh, entry plan. And it's, I, I call it a listening, learning, sharing, building. It's a listening, learning tour, I'm meeting a lot of people, building relationships, trying to understand the lay of the land, get a better handle on the culture of our organization. Um, it's divided into four segments. And if you can, yeah, I got a little bit of feedback from the board and the admin team. I've made some adjustments to this plan. I'm looking for more input from the board in regards to this plan. Uh, the first section is the governance team. And the governance team is the seven of you and, and myself, is the, the district administrator. Yeah, I'm not a board member, and I don't vote, but I provide counsel to you. I provide recommendations to you, and my job is to help you make good decisions. Uh, the second area is the organizational capacity and academic achievement. I mean, you talk to our academic achievement, that's the business of our business. We're here for the kids, we're here to continue the excellence in academics that our staff have provided. I've known about rights law my whole career. Everybody in the state, as far as, I mean, you talk about administrators, district administrators especially, you have a great reputation for academic excellence, and we want to ensure that that stays the way it is. Organizational culture is the third area, then community and public relations is, is the fourth. And there's some boxes there when you look at that, uh, that document, and I'm asking for your input for priorities. What do you want me to focus on first, second, third? Um, and then it just gets a little bit more detailed when you go down. It's a repeat, kind of repeating with more detail of what I'm looking at, uh, what I'm trying to learn. It's, it's a plan to help make my entry strategic so that I'm not sitting here, well, what do I do today? Well, I know what I'm going to do today, I'm going to know what I'm going to do next, tomorrow, or the next week. I just included a little bit, uh, en, entry plan staff survey. I sent that out on Monday, I was able to finally to get to it. I'm getting a little bit of feedback this morning when I checked it, I had forty responses. I requested the staff to give, uh, me responses by the end of the day on Friday, so I'm hoping we'll get more. Um, when I'm sitting down with individuals, whether it's school board members, the administrative team, the leadership team, district staff, or, or people from our community, I have a set, set of questions, different questions for each group, I'm compiling that, and I'll be giving updates on this as, as we move forward. Um, so that's that plan. So I look forward to getting feedback from the board and, and from the, the administrat, the administrative team's giving me a lot of feedback. They've been terrific, I'm very impressed with the team. We have a very strong team, they are true professionals, they're hardworking, they're committed. Uh, you know, I, I told you in here, one of my weaknesses, I, I'm a workaholic. I'm working on it, I'm trying to recover, but this admin team, they are workers, and I'm very proud of them. And I kind of fall in love with the admin team and the, the quality that they have. Uh, just to give you a little, uh, update here, some of the common themes. You know, only forty responses from the staff so far, we've got about a hundred and fifty staff. Um, but I'm asking for three questions. The first is, you know, what are our strengths? And these are themes, there's a lot more to share, but this really rose to the top. We have a, a community that's involved and very supportive of our schools. And I think, you know, I, I was talking to Scott, he gave me a tour of the building at the high school. You know, it was built in twenty-twenty, I said, Scott, he was here then. What was, how, how did that pass? What was the percentage of, of, for approval passed for that referendum? He said it was like seventy-some percent, and that, that is absolutely incredible. That is a testament to, um, the support of the community for the schools and the quality of education. The other strength, we put kids first. The staff is saying they put kids first, administration puts kids first, the board puts kids first. That is what we're about. Uh, the staff is invested in the district, I, I'm seeing that. Uh, we have a, a great staff. High expect, this is a staff saying that they have high expectations for themselves and for our students. And we have excellent students. Areas that we can improve on? Um, you know, my admin team's talking about curriculum. Our staff is talking about curriculum. They're looking for a strategic plan, they're looking for direction. They're looking for improvement in, in the planning for professional development. They're talking about increased communication, and I think I take responsibility for that. I need to communicate better to, uh, the staff, and we're going to work on that. They talked about a long-range plan. Um, that's something during the interview I talked a little bit about that I truly believe we need as a, as a board and a governance team to work at establishing a long-term plan, a strategic plan for our district. Not just for the next six months, but for the next, uh, ten, five, ten, fifteen years that you review every three years, you review it annually, but you update it every three years. Um, another thing, and this isn't just coming from our staff. This is, this is coming from the community, and it's coming from our admin team, and I see it when I do the comparables, that our teacher and support staff compensation needs to be looked at and evaluated and improved. Uh, if things need improvement, and we've talked about it here tonight, the political dynamics that, that exist and that the negativity that it's impacting the staff, the staff is telling me that. We don't want that. I'm asking for advice from my staff. To me, what can I do? What, what advice do you have so that I'm coming in and I can do a good job? They're saying be visible, be open, be present, be straightforward, ask questions, listen. Help staff understand my perspective, I, I want to do this, not just a one-way street where I'm learning from them. I think our staff needs to understand me as well, and I want to do a, a good job with that. Staff is saying focus on relationships, be open to all points of view, be transparent. So look, those are things that I'm going to work on as, as your interim administrator. And finally, uh, the recommendation for trying to work to foster a positive environment. I'm going to work to do that. My goal is not to divide, my goal is not to, uh, create issues. It is to be part of a solution and to do the best I can to foster a positive environment and, and unite us. I think there's more that we all, the community, the staff, the administration, our board have in common. I think there's more that our board has in common, um, than we have differences. And I think we need to rally behind a uniting item for a community or a school district. And what is that item? I don't know what that item is yet. Maybe you can help me what that item is. I don't know if it's something having to do with the budget, having to do with, with something, but, uh, we need to talk about that because we need to unify around something that all seven, all eight of us, all community-wise and administrative team and staff-wise, we unite around and we forward with. And finally, you know, I try to keep my reports minimal, but this is the first time, and, you know, I'm trying to have you get to know me a little bit too, so I'm talking more than I really want to, but, um... So next time, um, I'll give you another update on, on the people that I'm meeting right now. I have two meet people from the community. It's approximately twenty-five individuals, I think I've met the five of them. That, that, that list of people to meet in our community is growing on a daily basis because when I'm meeting with people, the last question is who in our community or inside our, our organization, our district, should I communicate with? Should I have a conversation with? And they keep giving me new names. And, uh, that's good. Today I met with, uh, the editor, Brad back there, and it was a great conversation. Um, I learned a lot, and he gave me some more to meet, so that list keeps growing, and I'm working to meet that and, uh, meet those people in our community. And that's all I have, unless you have a question for me? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's wise that we continue, you know, I, one of the things that I asked, uh, my admin team about and, um, when I met with Angela to set the agenda, I was kind of thinking, do we, okay... Okay, just so you know, I like to start with them and end on them, okay? That's how we run our meetings. My goal is to limit a board meeting to an hour if we can, no more than 90 minutes. Because in my experience, you meet for more than 90 minutes, the level of effectiveness is dwindles, you know? So as I'm trying to, what can we do to shorten the meeting, you know, the reports? But you know, what I'm learning is that these reports are very valuable. People in the community really appreciate hearing the reports from our admin team. And I really believe our board appreciates it too and so I don't want that to stop. So Angela reminded me, yes, we're going to continue with our admin reports. So they're going to give a high level of feedback to the board. At each of these meetings, these regular business meetings, the board meetings. So you want to start us out then?
Would love to. Spent a significant amount of time this month working on our federal and state tax documents for staff and vendors. These are W2s, 1099s, 1095s, they're required to be distributed by the end of January so that everyone can pay Uncle Sam. Happy to report that everything went out on time. Now we will shift our focus to the 25, 26 school year and we've begun the budget process. Also, the Department of Revenue has released our CPI number, which is 2.95%. So that's the number that we will use to project salary increases for staff. I will put those numbers together and then bring those to the board to look over next month, start looking at those and then we'll work towards a recommendation together and move forward from there. And that's all I have.
We had our ribbon cutting event for the book vending machine and had Ashley and Logan Rankin from Redefining Futures Foundation there to cut the ribbon as they're the foundation that donated this wonderful machine to WES. And then we had Mrs. Wellhouse and Mrs. Comfort's classrooms there to join in the ribbon cutting. And Neil Fisher and Landon Eater received the two first books, which was super exciting. And thanks to Ryan for being there to kind of capture that moment as well. We then had our second semester assembly that focused on being golden. We introduced the book vending machine to the whole school at this point and our new initiative, the Golden Awards. Students can earn a golden ticket, a golden coin for the book vending machine by following the golden rule of treating others the way you want to be treated and having integrity, which is our school theme. And then the Golden Awards are to highlight positive behavior in the cafeteria, playground, hallways and bathrooms. And I quizzed our two little boys right here and they nailed it, it's a nice job there. We had our 4K registration night on January 14th just to get our new students into the building, to tour the classrooms, give parents an opportunity to kind of see what Wrightstown Elementary School 4K is all about. And to obviously register their students, we had a great turnout for that. Thank you to Penny and to Corey for making sure registration went smoothly for that. We completed, this was a big one, all of our Act 20 assessments through Ames Web, which is a new reading legislation. So we completed all of the reading plans and now we're moving forward in meeting all of the student needs. I have to give a huge shout out to Kristen Higgins, Megan Coons, Shannon Skletzky and Emily Geiger. This was definitely a team effort where all of us had all hands on deck to complete all of the work in the allotted time as there's timeframes for this. And then lastly, I started my colleague connect where I spend 15 minutes with each staff member talking about just a couple of things, what's new in their life, what is going well at Wrightstown Elementary School, what do you need to continue to be able to lead with integrity? What could be improved upon for the second half of the school year? And who would you like to give a shout out to in the building? For me, it's just a great way to connect, kind of see how they're doing as a mid-year check-in with all employees. It doesn't matter who you are, I meet with them for 15 minutes and it's a highlight of my time, so. So it's happening here.
I'll go next since I'm in line here. We had our school-wide spelling bee, which is what I like to refer to as my annual challenge of enunciation because I have to announce all the words and try to make sure that kids know what I'm saying. So we had 32 individual classroom winners that competed in our spelling bee. Our champion, our school champion was Lilian Wordle, seventh grader. She won the competition by correctly spelling the word gondolas. She's moving on to compete in the regional competition that's held February 10th at Kiwanis. Actually, it was high school, but it's been moved to their elementary school, just found that out today. Also happening is on Friday 17th, Friday, January 17th, our middle school sources of strength group conducted a choose your own adventure event. Students were able to attend three separate sessions led by our WMS teachers promoting healthy activities, learning a new skill, finding positive alternatives to engage in if you're having a bad day. The event was followed by then our second quarter assembly where our students participated in a dodgeball competition. Great atmosphere, it was a great way to celebrate the halfway point of our school year and start looking ahead to our second semester. Several WMS students were accompanied by our sixth grade teachers, or two of our sixth grade teachers, Ashley Smart and Connor Edwards to an empower event. It was held at the Lambeau Field atrium. Students participated in a panel discussion with Green Bay Packer alumni. That was regarding creating a positive ripple effect. And then they also had an opportunity to tour Lambeau Field. And then finally, they did some packing of care packages for the Ronald McDonald House. Kids really loved that. And then finally, today, as part of our academic and career planning focus, our seventh graders went to NWTC to participate in an annual STEM fair. It's put on by Michigan Tech, it's called Mindtrekkers. The event showcases over 50 exhibits that focus on STEM-related activities and careers to help further interest in the STEM field and engage student involvement. Our students did an awesome job of exploring and asking questions, group was highly engaged and they didn't want to leave. So it's a tough time, I guess, getting them back to WMS for lunch. Special thanks to our seventh grade core teachers, Aaron Skell, Emmy August, Andy Hoppensberger and Ally Van Remortal, along with our school counselors, Angela Eater and Amanda Perdell for supervising. They did a great job, kids came back, they were excited. So thanks to our teachers and counselors for supervising that, that's all I have.
At the high school, our first semester is complete, grades and report cards have been posted. Working on finalizing class rank for our seniors. The next couple of days we'll have that complete and also modify our valedictorian senior's grade in advance of graduation. Taking a little bit more time doing that this year with the new student information system just to make sure everything is right. The Year in the Life of Frog and Toad, our musical took place on January 9th and 11th. It was a great family themed show. Our director, Rachel McCauley, who'd never done a musical before, did an awesome job with it. Also Zach Baker, our band teacher, assisted with the production. We're working on scheduling for the 25, 26 school year. By now, most of our students have met with advisors and turned in their selection sheets. So we'll start determining course numbers and sections and those things in the upcoming weeks. Senior Snowball was held on January 18th in our cafeteria. High school dances are really why I'm meant to do this job. Despite my dislike, the kids had a great time. It's really cool, definitely get all dressed up and come together on a Saturday. And again, where else would I rather be on a Saturday? FBLA regionals are coming up this weekend in Shano. Our FBLA has a 15-year winning streak of regionals, Mr. Bell's our advisor. We have 89 students competing on Saturday, he's hoping for a few more, but we're sharing some kids between forensics and FBLA this weekend. So he's looking to extend that streak and he's always cautiously optimistic. Every year, our staff has an opportunity to recognize a dozen students because they're just really good kids, good citizens. And the students they recognize are recognized at the Optimist's Bacon, which took place on January 22nd. Following 12 students were recognized this year. Sophomore Brooke Van Rossum, Jacob Van Dyke, Carmella Johnson and Ethan Hasimer. Junior Sienna Stotts, Molly Rivel, Ryan Leahy and Michael Vessel. And then seniors this year honored were Trevor Vanderheij, Will Schoenwalder, Elizabeth Lake and Eliana Cousins. When you see the names every year, it's like, yeah, this makes sense. And just some really good kids. And a huge thank you to Mike Olson for the time coordinating and getting all the information out to staff. Thank you.
So just a thank you to Roland Schmidt for providing first aid training for some of our staff on January 17th that afternoon. Over the last month, staff have been completing their mid-interval SLO reports and it's been so good to get into classrooms. We have lots of amazing staff, which some of them are here. So it's been really fun to see their work with kids. Thank you to Ms. Hannah for the McNabb, she's our special education coordinator. She just continues to do an excellent job working with our special education teams, doing progress reports and we have on average in the special ed department at least three IP meetings a day. So that's all the work of the special ed staff, so that's awesome. And then our EL staff has been working hard on completing access testing with our EL students over the last month and they've also done a great job. That's it.
All right, it looks like I'm last and usually I'm the longest too. We got a lot of stuff, a lot of great stuff started the year going on within the activities department here in Wrightstown. Especially with our activities really going strong here. But first off, I do have a report just on the Wellness Center, all right, for the past year. Today actually is the seven-year anniversary of the Wellness Center being open. Since the first year of use, we have doubled in the total check-ins. Last year alone, we totaled 38,232 check-ins, which is 4,000 more check-ins than the year prior. We have approximately 795 current members and we actually got 211 brand-new members added this past year. We continue to offer some great selection of classes such as Misfit, Bar, Yoga and of course, our popular senior in Strength and Stretch Weekly Class. With some of our, I call them the goats of the community that come here on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Jade Roscoe, we're very lucky to have her. She also offers some independent personal training services as well. We'll host this year our fifth annual health fair on Wednesday, March 26th. That's where we're bringing a lot of vendors for health and wellness that anybody can come in and check out. It's been a huge success. Also led by our teacher, Derek Erickson, we partner with American Red Cross. We have this blood drive every couple of months, they actually worked it out for our blood giving schedule. All right, we have a lot of students and staff and community members that take part in this. All right, we have some students that help run this and the more pints of blood that we donate, the more money they get in scholarships at the end of the year. So it's a pretty cool partnership and it helps everything, it really connects with the community. Lastly, another thing, our school partnership with Bell and Health, our licensed athletic trainer Roland Schmidt that we've had for many years, I say all conference for 20 years. He's always available by appointment to give a free pain and injury consultation in the Wellness Center. So that's a couple of things there. If you haven't been there, please check it out. Big news, we have a big shout out to our dance team. We earned the Northern Regional Dance Championship last Saturday in Division 6 Poms at DC Everest High School. All right, awesome job, we have a small team, but this team is super talented. Juliana Kuhn, Ireland Donovan and Audrey Skletzky, they do an awesome job. They also took third in D3 Jazz and they'll compete this weekend for a state championship in lacrosse. Tomorrow at school, we'll hold a send-off for them at 10:50, they're leaving at lunchtime, all right, heading over to lacrosse. Over the past weekend, our awesome robotics team led by Mr. Handman, Mr. Sauber, they were able to get another team to qualify for the state competition held later this winter in Green Bay. They did this at the Fond du Lac Robotics Competition held over the weekend. Some of our other teams will get a chance to qualify. They have, this is kind of their favorite one this week, the Green Bay Packers actually put on a huge robotics competition in Lambeau Field that we've been going through against teams from all around the world. It's super fun, it's a super good time to go and watch. Our FBLA team, I know Scott talked about it before, the 89 members, a cool thing, we actually need two buses to transfer all our students to Shano this weekend. They're going for their 16th straight regional title. One of the main reasons is because Mr. Dell, he's awesome, all right? But just also, we have almost over 100 members, that's what a quarter of our school is belonging to this organization and we bring there with the biggest team and it helps out a lot. All right, so we're hoping that we can get a lot of people that will qualify for state that's going to be held in Green Bay in April. Our Wrightstown FFA team, all right, they have had some groups also take part in competitions. Our first one, our FFA Dairy Products and Milk Quality Team won first place at the National FFA Northeast Wisconsin CDE Contest. 32 teams and 135 individuals from across the country actually took part. All right, and we had a couple of top 10 finishes. Victoria Watzka took first, Molly Rubel second, Aubrey Bunker eighth and McKenna Nandory ninth. Also, we had Gracie Fernandez, Matthew Lob, Sienna Stotts take part in the Wisconsin FFA District 25 Speaking Contest. Gracie was runner-up in the prepared speaking and Sienna placed second in the discussion meet event and won the, I always screw this one up, Ex-Pharisees Speaking Contest. I taught those studies for 15 years, my car is. Gracie and Sienna earned the right to move on and compete in the Wisconsin FFA sectional contest in March. Victoria Watzka and Elena Schultz, National FFA Agroscience Fair finalists, they were actually invited and they were on a podcast with other Wisconsin FFA state officers. All right, encouraging, providing helpful hints for all the FFA members in our FFA Agroscience Fair and events. Thank you to our FFA team and Mr. Pinchardt, our advisor. All right, our awesome Wrightstown Forensics Team led by Mr. Winkler opened our 2025 season last week. And they got in Appleton East and they got four individual category championships and a second-place trophy overall. The tournament featured 15 schools from across the state and Wrightstown's 39 entries earned 255 points, narrowly falling to first place Kekon. Our Tigers were led by seniors Natalie Garcia and Reagan Jutten. Garcia advanced to finals in all three of her events, including unanimous first-place finish in the Varsity Pros. Jutten advanced to finals in two of his three events and secured first place in both Original Oratory and Solo Acting Series. Joining Garcia and Jutten as individual category champions was Jules Capel, who were in first place in Expository Speaking. We're actually going to host a forensic competition, kind of a smaller one, this Saturday in the middle school. Thank you, Mr. Culwards, for letting us use that. Our National Honor Society, all right, led by Mrs. Grobog and Mrs. Lukey, we host our annual Flyaway Cancer Night during our girl-boy basketball doubleheader with FBL, Fox Valley Lutheran on Friday, January 3rd. This is always an awesome event each year. It includes all our NHS members organizing and running a miracle minute, airplane toss at halftime and then of course, basket raffle prizes. They also go out and connect with local business people around. We're very lucky, we have partnered with Eagle Graphics and Print Pro, who definitely helped the school, great partners with the school, along with Appleton Lane. We're willing to match up to $1,000 collected, along with Wheezy Brothers Farms, that also helps the school a lot too, who matched up to $500 money collected. We raised in total $6,500 that night in a three-hour period and we donated it all to Melissa Malford, who is a parent in our school district currently that is battling cancer. We want to give a real shout out to everybody who was there, especially the fans from FBL. One of the really cool things is our National Honor Society partners with the other schools. So FBL's National Honor Society helped us too and they put together a basket with businesses from theirs too. And FBL is a great school, so we're lucky to partner with them. I would also like to thank Judy Ward, all right, who leads our teen outreach activity group. All right, she goes every year for one Sunday from 6:00 in the morning till about 11:00 at night to ski brew all taken high school kids. She has blast, she has a huge heart and a lot of these kids that she takes there, they'll never go skiing ever again. And they'll never have that opportunity, but she goes there and if you know Judy, she has the biggest smile, the biggest energy and just infectious, so thank you to Judy for that. Teen Outreach is one of our great groups, it's not a competitive group, it's just another way for kids, all right, in a co-curricular, all right, extension of our curriculum that they can get together and they can just enjoy each other's company and be themselves and feel safe, so it's awesome. Thank you, Judy. Going on with sports, we're getting close down to the end of the year. Our girls' basketball team is currently 7-9, 7-4 in conference. They will play at Luxver Casco tomorrow. We're hoping to end the regular season with strong momentum and get in the WIA playoffs and make a run. I think that's possible. Our boys' basketball team is currently 8-7 with a 6-5 conference record. We will host Okada Falls this Friday, which should be an awesome, awesome atmosphere in the Tiger Dome on a Friday night. As mentioned earlier, our band led by Zach Baker is definitely a must seat. They'll be playing during pre-game and halftime, all right, always very entertaining, especially with Jacoby going on those drums. But thank you to Zach and all the stuff we're doing there, so hopefully he can come out and support our Tigers. Wrestling will finish up the regular season tomorrow night in the Tiger Dome as we host that green team to the west of us. Before our varsity match, we'll be recognizing the 20-year anniversary of our 2005 WIA State Title Team Wrestling Championship and our five-year anniversary. Doesn't seem that long ago, our 2020 WIA Team State Wrestling Championship Team as well too. So hopefully a lot of those members can come in there and give us a little extra go against that team, green team to the west. We'll be actually hosting the WIA Girls Wrestling Regionals, it's the first time ever in WIA, on Friday, February 14th. All right, so if you don't have any Valentine's Day fans, come to the Tiger Dome, watch the girls' wrestling. All right, so if you don't have any Valentine's Day fans, come to the Tiger Dome, watch some girls wrestling. I know I'll be there. Our boys wrestlers will compete in WIA Boys Wrestling Regionals in Denmark the next night. All right, our next day, Saturday, February fifteenth, so good luck to our wrestlers. Our boys hockey team, Ryan Leahy, as mentioned before. He competes with our co-op with Ashwam Plaskin Seymour. They're currently eleven and ten overall and three and four in conference record. They have two home contests. Our home contest, our Cornerstone, all right, will face Kettle, Moraine, and Messego next week. All right, Ryan is an awesome kid, and he starts for defense, and he represents Wrightstown and that team very well. From that, that's all I have. Go Tigers!
Okay, so I just, next up is the meeting summary, and I always like to end on a good note. There's really good stuff to hear from all of the administration. You know, it's really good to know that we had a student, you know, place first at the WSAB convention. And listening to the audit that has passed, the ribbon-cutting with the vending, the spelling bee, the NWTC mindtrekkers, the special education teachers and their support in forensics, and the sports that we have a overwhelming talent here with regard to sports and FFA. You know, this is the stuff that we have to focus on, and as a community, coming here and supporting us as board members and trying to bring us together. I really appreciate that, and I know the other board members do as well. We also brought in, you know, streaming of videos so we can become more transparent. We had WSAB training last week where a couple of us wanted to try to increase our knowledge and serve you better. And so, like I said, we do need to be better as a board. We do need to be better at our communication. We're going to take your feedback. But each one of us on the board owns it, and we're going to try as a group to do that. But this, this energy that I get from you and all of the good things that you're doing is really what each one of us are here for, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the comments. And some of it is very difficult for you to speak, and I feel like I stood there with you to help you share your concerns. As far as the board, we do have our board workshop February fifth, as Ron indicated. Couple things that the board would like to work on, and Ron is going to be working on with board common commitments. We're also going to take a look at taking a review of our board agenda, taking a look at a consent agenda, as well as adding a future agenda topics item for future board members to have more input into what we are going to discuss at our board meetings and our board workshop. And then lastly, I do want to welcome Ron. I think Ron is a great leader. He has a lot of experience as a superintendent. He's very strategic, and he's coming into a very difficult situation. I wish that we would give him the opportunity and the time to get acclimated and give him the support that he needs. So again, thank you for everybody that's coming and all of your concerns, questions, and comments. Again, I want to end this on just focusing on the good stuff that this school is doing and try to not leave here and continue to be attacking, personally attacking, or divisive amongst one group or another. Let's try to pull together, and I will do that myself. On that note, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
What's the motion?
Someone, you got a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mike. I'll be favored.
I'm dying.
Anybody have pulled this? All right, Michael Perry. Thank you. Have a good night.